I'm going to call the City Council Caucus Meeting to order for January 26, 2015. We have two public hearings tonight. If the clerk would read the first one.
Public hearing number one, amending Chapter 264-61, Section 3 of the Code of the City of Schenectady with regards to electronic message board rate of change.
And public hearing number two?
Number two, amending Section 264-14 of the Code of the City of Schenectady with regards to the C-3 Waterfront Mixed Use Commercial District Regulations.
Okay. And then for original consideration, item number one.
Item number one, under original consideration, a resolution reappropriating the adopted 2014 budget.
Discussed in the Finance Committee without objection on consent. Item number two?
Item number two, a resolution authorizing a contract for firefighter turnout gear with B Lane Equipment.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number three?
Item number three, a resolution authorizing the transfer of two Barrett Street properties to the Schenectady Urban Renewal Agency.
Also discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number four?
Item number four, a resolution authorizing the sale of 2619 Broadway.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number five?
Item number five, a resolution celebrating Martin Luther King Jr.
This will be taken out of order. Ms. Porterfield will present that. Item number six?
Item number six, a resolution recognizing February as African-American History Month.
This one, we're going to hold for two weeks and we'll make this presentation at that time. Okay, item number seven?
Item number seven, a resolution recognizing the Schenectady City School District's 2015 Teacher of the Year, Kristin Alaknowitz.
This will also be taken out of order. Mr. Riggi will make that presentation. Item number eight?
Item number eight, under Contract and Supply, a resolution awarding the contract for golf course tree removal to D&amp;L Tree Service.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number nine?
Item number nine, a resolution authorizing the acceptance of the proposal regarding one rescue utility body with the necessary related equipment.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number 10?
Item number 10, a resolution authorizing water pollution control plant laboratory upgrades.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number 11?
Item number 11, a resolution authorizing the purchase of chlorine gas from JCI Jones Chemical, Inc.
That's one of our regular purchases without objection on consent. Item number 12?
Item number 12, a resolution authorizing the purchase of hydrofusilic acid from Thatcher Company of New York, Inc.
Got it right. Without objection on consent. Yeah. Item number 11, or 13, rather, excuse me.
A resolution authorizing the purchase of sodium hypochlorite from Surpass Chemical Company.
Also discussed in committee without objection on consent. And we have four other items that were discussed in two recessed committee meetings tonight. So, item number 14?
Item number 14, a resolution recommending the reapportment of Karen Zawalski-Walzounis to the Metroplex Development Authority.
Okay. Close, Zawalski-Walzounis, but again, discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number 15?
Item number 15, a resolution authorizing the sale of 824 Loudondary Road.
Discussed in committee tonight without objection on consent. Item number 16?
Item number 16, a resolution authorizing the sale of 318 Duane Ave.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent. And item number 17?
Item number 17, a resolution authorizing the sale of 603 Seneca Street.
Also discussed in committee without objection on consent. All right, if there's nothing else to come before the City Council Caucus Meeting, I'll be glad that meeting closed and call to order the City Council Meeting for Monday, January 26, 2015. If you'd please rise for the invocation by the Reverend Dave Chichum from Sri Ganesh Mandir of Schenectady.
Let us all pray, please. Madam Chairman, Honorable Mayor, distinguished councilors, beloved brothers and sisters, a very, very good evening. Let us with our faith, devotion, reverence, and love and gratitude, join together in glorifying that supreme absolute reality, supreme God. Adorable Lord of Mercy, source of all sources, Redeemer of the world, glory, glory, glory unto Thee. We meditate on Thy radiant divine glory, which illuminates our understandings, our souls, and our lives, by whose grace we are blessed and inspired to think righteously, to speak intelligently, and to act productively. Sweet Lord, please continue to bless the Honorable Mayor, the diligent and dignified councilors, and the rest of this sweet assembly for their outstanding contribution, for the ultimate welfare of this committee and committee. Gracious Lord, as we begin this meeting, we ask that You will guide our thoughts and our actions so that we may have a successful and satisfying meeting. Lord God, bless us that our decisions today can be good for all, conducive to heaven, permanent and joyful. Help us to accomplish our goals while displaying our character. As we aspire for highest objectives and resolve to proceed on a noble path, may Your divine splendor guide our intellect towards a path of true realization and ultimate salvation. Bless us that we can be strong in our bodies, formidable in our minds, constant in our character, where we so bewildered by these attractive deceptive illusions of the world, and we are afflicted by our fickle senses and minds, and as we are agitated by our misunderstandings and misconceptions of life. Universal, loving, living God, bless us in this city that we can be free from negative thinking, misunderstanding, conflict, transgression, sickness, false pride, prejudice, and animosity. Father, please bless us and forgive us for the numerous mistakes, offenses, and sins that we have committed knowingly and unknowingly. May peace be unto all, may joy be unto all, may divine blessings be unto all. God bless this assembly, God bless this city, and God bless the best in the world, United States of America. Thank you all very much.
I'm going to ask Philip Morris to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and in doing so wishing him a happy birthday.
(audience) I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, if the clerk would call the roll.
Ms. Parazzo, Ms. Porterfield, Mr. Ferrari, Mr. Kozier, Mr. Riggi, Mr. Mutavaren, Ms. King.
Present. All right, we have two out-of-order resolutions. The first regarding Dr. Martin Luther King, so I'll ask Ms. Porterfield to go up there. Thank you. I'd like to ask those who are here to receive the resolution to come forward, please. You have the floor.
A resolution honoring Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., whereas the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. was born January 15, 1929, and thereafter dedicated his life to the pursuit of equality of all regardless of race, creed, or national origin. And whereas he traveled to communities across the nation and around the world to lecture on his belief in the nonviolent resolution of the social ills which plagued society, therefore providing inspiration and sustenance to those struggling against racism, poverty, and war. And whereas on August 28, 1963, Dr. King delivered the most famous of his addresses known to history as the "I Have a Dream" speech during our nation's greatest civil rights demonstration held on the steps of the Lincoln Memorial in Washington, DC. And whereas Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. paid the ultimate sacrifice for his beliefs when an armed gunman assassinated him in the early morning hours of April 4, 1968. And whereas the federal government established a national holiday in order to remember the life, work, and dreams of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., which the nation first observed on January 20, 1986, and continues to annually observe on the third Monday of January. And whereas on Sunday, January 18, 2015, the Schenectady County Human Rights Commission Martin Luther King Jr. Coalition hosted their 29th Annual Martin Luther King Celebration Service to memorialize Dr. King at the Mount Olivet Baptist Church here in Schenectady. And whereas at this celebration, the Reverend Horace Sanders, pastor of Mount Olivet Baptist Church, gave the keynote address and presided over a special tribute service and program. And whereas the Schenectady County Human Rights Commission dedicated its 2015 MOK Celebration Service to the memory of the Reverend Eloise M. Frazier, a tireless advocate who is a founder and chair of the Schenectady County Human Rights Commission Martin Luther King Jr. Coalition, and a member of numerous community organizations. Now therefore be resolved that the Mayor Gary R. McCarthy and City Council do hereby pause in their deliberations to recognize January 19, 2015 as the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Day Jr. in the City of Schenectady and honor the memory and achievements of the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. and Reverend Eloise Frazier by calling upon all citizens of Schenectady to rededicate themselves to friendship, tolerance, and understanding as a part of the continuing progress towards a day when the dignity and humanity of every person is respected. Madam Chair, I move the resolution.
All right, seconded by Mr. Mutavaren. All in favor? Aye.
Well, thank you for recognizing the Human Rights Commission Martin Luther King Celebration that we had on January 18. I just want to thank all the City Council members and the Mayor and everyone in the community that came out to celebrate Martin Luther King, as well as the late Reverend Frazier, who was a trailblazer here in Schenectady and a tireless advocate for civil rights, human rights, and social justice. So I just, again, want to say on behalf of the Human Rights Commission, thank you for all your support and your continued support, and let us continue to hold the dream of Dr. King. Our theme was "Celebrate, Act, and Share the Dream." And as we go throughout our daily lives here in Schenectady and Schenectady County, let us celebrate, let us act, and share that dream, because you all will make a difference here in the community if you continue to hold the dream in front of you as you go throughout your daily lives and also as elected officials, holding that dream alive. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morris.[757.62][757.62](applause) Okay, Mr. Riggi for Teacher of the Year.
Mrs. Alaknowitz and your supporters. It's a resolution to honor Schenectady School District 2015 Teacher of the Year Kristin Alaknowitz. Nice. Proud of your mommy, huh? Yeah, you should be. Madam Chair?
You have the floor, Mr. E.
Thank you. A resolution recognizing the Schenectady City School District's 2015 Teacher of the Year Kristin Alaknowitz, whereas Kristin Alaknowitz earned a Bachelor of Science degree in elementary education from the State University of New York at Plattsburgh, demonstrating her early commitment to the shaping of young minds. And whereas she went on to obtain a Master of Science in Education and Special Education from the Massachusetts College of Liberal Arts. And whereas she began teaching in the City of Schenectady in 1994 and continues to do so over 20 years later. And whereas her commitment to her students is not limited to classroom hours, as demonstrated by her development of and involvement in after-school activities such as drama club and school autograph club. And whereas she contributes to the profession of teaching, known to her colleagues as a team player and outstanding leader, as well as a consummate professional who puts children's first. Very important. Now therefore be it resolved that the Mayor Gary R. McCarthy and the City Council do hereby pause in their deliberations to recognize the achievements of Kristin Alaknowitz as the Schenectady City School District's 2015 Teacher of the Year and thank her for her dedication and service both to her students and to this city. Madam Chair, I move this resolution.
Right, seconded by Mr. Mutavaren. All in favor? Aye. Congratulations.[891.73][891.73](applause)
Now, Mrs. O, as she's called, and I don't want the Gazette to bash me in an editorial, that's what she's called, she teaches at Van Corleone School, and that's a school that I graduated from when it was a junior high school, so I have some connections there. It's very nice to see you and I'll give you time to say some words.
I would like to extend my sincere gratitude to Mayor McCarthy, Councilman Riggi, and the members of the Schenectady City Council. When I was first surprised by Schenectady Superintendent Spring while teaching in my classroom, I couldn't believe that I was chosen out of all the incredibly talented and dedicated educators in the district to be their Schenectady City School District's Teacher of the Year 2014-15. What an incredible honor for doing what I love. It fills me with great pride to go forward and do my part to educate and help mold Schenectady's future. We live in a wonderful time of growth in our city, and the children's lives that we touch today will be our leaders of tomorrow. I am humbled by the honor you have bestowed upon me this evening. I greatly appreciate your recognition and wish to also say thank you for all that you do for our city. My heart belongs to Schenectady. It is where I grew up and where I choose to help make a difference. As an educator, I feel teaching is not just about academic content. It is also, in the words of my colleagues, motivating and encouraging the youth, educating the future, helping students to be successful, showing students that they are important, helping them see their challenges and their strengths, helping the students be the best that they can be in making a difference in young lives. But most importantly, I believe that teaching is a partnership, partners with the parents of our students, members of our community, and you, the leaders of Schenectady. It is through many years of volunteering within Schenectady with such organizations as Sicom and Proctor's Theater that I worked to foster these partnerships. It is my goal for my students to begin to see that I'm not only their teacher, but I'm a member of their community family. So together, in these partnerships, we can make the difference in the lives of our children and help our city to continue to prosper. So again, from the bottom of my heart, I thank you very, very much.
And I believe you're also being honored at the Schenectady Schools Foundation. They have an event coming up too, so Thursday, thank you. I couldn't remember which day it was at Stockade Inn. Okay. All right, moving on, we will move on to our public hearings. If the clerk again would read the first one?
Public hearing number one, amending Chapter 264-61, Section 3 of the Code of the City of Schenectady with regards to electronic message board rate of change.
I have one person signed up to speak, and that's David Giaccolani.
Hello, everybody. Thanks for having me back. I'm here just to basically say that eight seconds may very well be a good standard, but I wanted to point out to you that the standard guideline, the three-page document that the NYSS Department of Transportation put out, has a number of other thoughts that should be known when you're thinking about this subject. One, this is only, the eight seconds is a minimum statewide standard. It's not, you can be consistent with the state standard and have higher. In fact, it specifically says that local ordinances that are more strict will govern. And it then goes on to give reasons why these kinds of signs can be very distracting. One of the things that it says that was news to me is that it is prohibited to have any signs in a place where the driver can see two at the same time, even on two different sides of the street. They have to be 300 feet apart at least if they're in the sight view of the driver. That might be something that a lot of our businesses are going to have to keep in mind. And it's a, it is a mandate. It's not, that is not optional. And they also said that their study that they based the finding that there was no increase in accidents in places where there were these kinds of electronic machines was based on freeway and highway driving. It was not based on city driving. And therefore, I hope that in the special use permit process, there will be a lot of thought given to the issues of how different is this particular location? Is it more distracting? Is there too many, are there too many lights? One of the things they said is that elderly people or senior citizen drivers are particularly bothered by flashing for changing lights, especially faces, which is interesting, and more bothered than other age groups. So I think you need to be thinking that eight seconds is the minimum standard, but we need to be open when people come in and have problems with having blinking lights at a particular place. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I have no one else signed up to speak. So that public meeting or public hearing closed, we'll move on to our second public hearing.
Public hearing number two, amending Section 264-14 of the Code of the City of Schenectady with regards to the C-3 Waterfront Mixed Use Commercial District Regulations.
All right, I have about 20 people signed up to speak to this, so I'll just remind you again, please try to stay within your three minutes. And if someone else has said what you've said, maybe you could just say, "I agree with this person," and we can just move on. First person is Bob Mantello.
Good evening, City Council members. Gary McCarthy. My name is Bob Mantello and I'm a lifelong resident of Schenectady. And for the last 12 years, I've been a resident of the Stockade. I stand in support of adopting C-3 Waterfront Zoning Amendment that will enable the $480 million Mohawk Harbor project to proceed as planned. As you're aware, this project will create hundreds of good-paying jobs and add to tax revenue for the City of Schenectady and the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephen Mesek?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Stephen Mesek. I'm a resident here of Schenectady County and a member of Labor's Local 157 and the Schenectady County IDA. I'm here in support of the C-3 Waterfront Zoning. Not only is it a $480 million investment in the city, but it's an investment in our future. Like Mr. Mantello said, a lot of jobs, our infrastructure, it's an economic driver, and I think it's going to be great for the city here. Like I said, this is not only us, this is our future. This is even more economic development, you know, further up in the Vale neighborhood and the rest of the neighborhoods of the city. It's just not downtown, it's the whole county. It's for our schools, for our children, and I urge you to adopt the C-3 zoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Jason Plank?
Madam President, City Council, Mayor. One of the things is that disability parking. They had made a regulation to reduce the square footage versus how many parking spaces. Disability parking is based on how many parking spaces. When you look at both federal and state law, they both mirrored the number of spaces, whereas state law is a little bit more stringent and they require eight-foot access aisles and eight-foot parking spaces. New York State's a little bit more progressive than the other states and a little bit more better. To give you a little bit of an idea, we have about 26,000 individuals with disabilities in the county and about 15,000 that live in the city. We have approximately around 23,000 senior citizens, and approximately about half of them live here in the city. We have a higher senior citizen population. Over the next 20 years to 30 years, they're supposed to increase senior citizen population by about 40%. With that, they're estimating the senior citizen population, about half of them are going to have neurological and mobility impairments. So there's going to be an increase in requirements of disability parking spaces over the next 20 to 30 years. You also have two pieces of the puzzle here. You have one, you have the bike trail, and that's the responsibility of a Title II entity, which is the government entity. And then you have the regular Title III, which is the casino and the waterfront property. So you have both the responsibility to make sure that there's adequate access to not only the bike trail but also to the projects. If you take a look at it, parking spaces are 5%, and when you go over 100% of over 100 spaces, they start reducing down to 2%. When you figure that 10% of the disability population and the senior citizen population are mobility impaired, neurological impaired, to start reducing that even from 5% down to 2%, you're still getting a lot more, less spaces, and you're getting a higher and much more demand. So, one of the proposals that I'm asking for the City Council is to make sure to make a local law to increase it to 5%. Let me give you an example, is if you go to 200 spaces, you're only required to have six disability parking spaces, but if you had 5%, that would be 10 spaces. So you're already losing four parking spaces, already go into 200 parking spaces. So by upgrading that to the 5%, we'll increase the four spaces. So that's what I'm hoping for also too, is that under vehicle traffic law, it's dumping snow onto the parking spaces. Make sure that we have something that goes into the vehicle traffic one. And also under vehicle traffic law, you have where you can have the security guards at the casino actually write the disability parking spaces. So if there's something that we could do for that, that would also help. Thank you.
Thank you. Bobby Iovanella?
Bobby Iovanella, 265 Gordon Road, Schenectady. I'm very honored to be here, in front of the Council and Honorable Gary McCarthy. I am a land developer and builder. I've been doing a project in the Capitol Region since 1978, and I wholeheartedly support this zone change, the C-3. Schenectady cannot afford to lose this project. Again, I have been in front of planning boards, town boards, zoning boards since 1978, and I never had a board, a planning board vote eight zip for a project with a very diversified planning board in the city. My hat goes off to David Buco and the Gillesse Group to bring in this operator for the casino to Schenectady, New York. It's so critically important. And to me, it's like Thomas and Edison coming to Schenectady and finding the great flats to start the General Electric Corporation. So thank you very much, and I would hope at the next meeting you folks vote yes on the zone change. Thank you very much.
Thank you. John Palamene?
My name's John Palamene. I live at 1165 McCollum Street here in the city. I'm speaking in favor of the zoning change. The C-3 Waterfront Zoning was developed in collaboration between the city and the developers of the waterfront. Furthermore, the Planning Commission held a review session that looked at the new zoning changes, and they voted eight to zero in favor of the change. Therefore, there's been a great deal of review of the process, and I would like to urge the City Council to pass this measure. Thank you.
Thank you. Chuck Steiner?
Good evening. I'm Chuck Steiner, President of the Chamber of Schenectady County. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight in support of the proposed C-3 Waterfront Casino Zoning Amendments. The Chamber believes the entire Mohawk Harbor project is a win for the city, the county of Schenectady, and its businesses and residents. of Schenectady, and its businesses and residents. The proposed C3 waterfront zoning revisions have been developed after lengthy considerations with the developers, the city planning staff, the city planning commission, which approved the new zoning by an eight-to-zero vote, and importantly, input from the public. We'd also like to note that we believe that these revisions are keeping with the parameters of the 2008 waterfront mixed-use district zoning approved by the city council. According to the C3 waterfront district zoning Section A, one of the specific purposes of this district is to encourage flexibility in the design of land development, preservation of unique environmental features, and maintenance of the aesthetic quality of waterfront areas by establishing appropriate design and promote a more creative and imaginative design for development of the waterfront. The suggested zoning change is developed after lengthy consideration and input from the public, the Gillesse Group, Rush Street Gaming, and the city will enable a more creative and imaginative project, a project that no one would believe possible when the original zoning plan was created. The proposed changes will still, as the original section 264 states, provide for a desirable mix of water dependent, excuse me, water-enhanced recreational opportunities, business and residential uses, which will complement each other and take advantage of the unique location characteristics of the Mohawk River. Importantly, this project, as we know, is taking an abandoned brownfield that was totally inaccessible to the public and provided a no-tax base to a multi-dimensional project that will offer our residents and visitors a place to live and work and play. I'd also like to note that Section A notes that one of the purposes of the district is to encourage coordination with public agencies and private organizations involved with the waterfront planning or waterfront-related developments. The chamber is proud that we're part of a community that embraces public input, and we applaud that the public, the city, Metroplex, the county, Gillesse Group, Rush Street Gaming, and all the private-public partners involved in this project are working together to make the necessary revisions so this remarkable project can begin. Again, the chamber applauds the hard work, long hours, and serious consideration that went into this proposed changes, and we strongly urge the city council to adopt C3 zoning at its next meeting on February 3, so this game-changing project for Schenectady can move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Solango.
Good evening, Madam President, council members, Mayor McCarthy. I'm Jim Solango, the executive director of the Downtown Schenectady Improvement Corporation. The Mohawk Harbor site lies just outside of our district, but the potential positive impact of this nearly half-billion-dollar investment on downtown Schenectady is enormous. In addition to the jobs and the revenue it will bring to Schenectady, it will mean more tenants and apartments and condominiums to patronize downtown services, our shops, restaurants, and entertainment. It will attract more visitors looking to discover the many sites and businesses in downtown Schenectady and this entire area. It will turn a massive vacant brownfield site into a vibrant destination that reconnects Schenectady to its riverfront and further elevates a significant Erie Boulevard corridor, where there's already been a wonderful amount of improvement. I personally attended the Planning Commission meeting on January 14. It was a lengthy, involved discussion with very good community input and a healthy discussion among the commissioners during a line-by-line review of the proposed changes. The fact that the commission voted eight to zero to recommend these changes speaks volumes to the process. At the same meeting, the city's corporation council made it very clear to everyone there that the C3 waterfront zoning was developed in partnership between the city and the developers. I believe it was very prudent for council members to seek input from the Planning Commission before coming to a decision on these zoning changes, and you now have received their recommendations. I urge the city council to adopt the C3 zoning at its next meeting on February 9, so that this transformational project for Schenectady, for downtown, for this entire region can move forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Gloria Kishsten.
Yeah, Gloria Kishsten. I live in the city, and I want to just state upfront, I am not speaking for Schenectady Heritage Foundation, which I usually do, because it's not a historic preservation issue. I'm a little confused, because the C3 zoning does exist. It has existed since the 2008 comprehensive plan was passed, so that is really not at issue here. The development is coming, and I think now that it's coming, everybody's going to work with the city and the developers, and whenever the public has a chance to have input, I think that's a great thing. I was at the Planning Commission meeting last week also. I did leave a little bit early, but what we did not have was the 2008 comprehensive plan that talked about the C3 zoning issues on one hand and the changes that were being requested on the other hand. And tonight, we're addressing those changes. We are not addressing whether the C3 zoning exists at all, so, you know, the development is happening. Now, one thing that I am really, really concerned about, that I would love the city attorney or the council to answer, is the difference in whether the public has a perpetual registered easement to have the right to use our waterfront. That is really important to me. At this point, that is the most important thing to me, because in the original 2008 legislation, the public was guaranteed that right to retain use of the waterfront, but I do not see that in the proposed changes. I would be really outraged if this council voted to allow the developer to control the public access to the waterfront. I know that there are incentives in the changes that are proposed for the developer to maybe have a trade-off and encourage public access, but I really want a clarification of that. It's really, really important to us that the people who live in Schenectady have the right to use that waterfront. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill Fabian.
I'm Bill Fabian, vice president of NBT Bank in Schenectady. I'm a resident of Scotia, and I respectfully ask the city council to approve this C3 zoning that was unanimously approved by the planning board. It's a critically important project for the city and county. We need to keep the momentum moving. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Chris Spargan.
Hello, city council. I'm Madam President, Mayor McCarthy. My name is Chris Spargan, the president of Schenectady Harbor Electric, and my office is on Erie Boulevard. I fully support the change in the zoning. I don't, pretty much everyone said what I was thinking, so I'll keep my opinion curt. I think the one thing I will add to that, though, is the developers are the ones putting in all this money. I think we should lend their decision and make it their way of doing it, just to, they were spending all this money. It should be a decision that they should, with the council, should be worked together, but I think that they came up with this plan for a reason, and we should listen to them. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Billy McDonald.
Good evening, council. My name is Billy McDonald. I'm one of the owners of the Van Dyke in the Stockade neighborhood, as well as the parking lot for the Van Dyke on the corner of Erie Boulevard and Union. We are only a short distance from this project, and we are very supportive of the zoning change. We think this project is transformational for the community, and we are looking forward to significant improvements to this site from what it is now. We urge your support for this zoning amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm having a little trouble with the writing here. Is it Jay or Joy Nist? Something close. Sorry about that.
It's Jay, for the record.
Thank you.
It happens every time. You see, my penmanship's not going to carry me far, so I beg pardon, but thank you for giving me just a couple moments. Want to rise and just say, you know, "Good evening, mayor and city council. Thanks for having me, and thanks for having the meeting." I like these open forums, because this is just a marvelous project. You know, opportunity shows up and it knocks, and this has knocked very loudly. I mean, anytime you can get, you know, the governor of the Empire State to be able to deem and bless an area like this and say, "We want to see the genesis of it. We want to see it move forward." You know, we're all familiar with the work that the Gillesse Group does in reform architecture. Take no further look than take a look down that State Street. I mean, look at it. You don't need me to, you know, declare and call. Everybody has a set of eyes. We know the kind of work that they do. But the thing with it is, these beautiful edifices that are up and down these streets, and I'm sure it's going to happen over there, I have every confidence in the world it'll happen, they're built by people. A lot of them are here. They have people that are inside them, and they're constructed by people with a humane and a human eye attached to it. And that's one of the beauties that reform architecture and the Gillesse Group has brought to the city. And I spend a lot of time in and out of cities and talking to different municipalities. They would kill to be in this position, and it's through your leadership up here, through the leadership from some of the people in the assemblage here, that have done it. You know, I just get to fly high on borrowed wings. I get to show up and reap the benefits, and I've done zero, not a scintilla. So I don't know how anybody could come up and rightfully try and poke a hole in that edifice that's going to go down there, that's going to put people to work. There's going to be people that build it. I just was enjoying one of the edifices this evening. I was over at Johnny's, and stacked on top of it is AAA, and quirky's on top of that. And, you know, going back to the Empire State, what does it mean? Excelsior, higher. So, Dave, build it right, build it high, make it beautiful, make it one of those gorgeous edifices, and you're going to employ people, and it's going to, you know, echo. So that's all I have to say, and I really strongly support the zoning that's in front of you folks this evening. So thanks for listening to me, and just for the record, it's Jay, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
David Giaccoloni.
David Giaccoloni, Washington Avenue. Three minutes cannot possibly address all of the incredibly important issues that are raised by this. As Ms. Kishsten said, the question here is not, "We need C3 or there will be no casino." There will be a casino. The question here is, are these rather extreme changes in the C3 zoning something that is the best for the interest of our city and not merely for the developer? We, the comprehensive plan said C3 was specifically set up so that it would enhance the scenic views of the river. And then, and we get renderings from the applicant that shows a hotel by the river that's about 60 feet high, and we see a gaming facility that looks like it's about 40 feet high, because it's even smaller than the hotel. And then, they come forward now, and they want 110. If they had shown that scale originally of 110-foot hotel, 40 feet from our riverbank, even supporters, strong supporters, would say, "Wait a second, you can't, we have to do this right. We just don't have to do it. We have to do it right." This is going to set the tone for the ambiance of this city for a very long time, and when we're told buildings can be high, because there used to be big buildings there, well, let's look at the facts. The buildings there were about 45 to 50 feet high, and occasionally, they had one section, maybe a twentieth of the long 1,000-foot thing, that was maybe 100 feet high. None of those sort of chimneys or towers in any way blocked the view from Erie Boulevard. The notion that because those buildings were so high, we can have high buildings now that block out the view so that Goose Hill can't see the river anymore, is just outlandish. And I think people should say, "You're insulting our intelligence. Why, you know, why do you have to make this kind of an argument?" The 19, oh, I'm sorry. The other thing is, we were told that the applicant needed 15,000 square feet at a maximum for its signage. They told us that 12,500 square feet was what they had in the plane, and they apparently came in and started asking for 100,000, and our corporation council got them down to 20,000. But no one knows why. No one here knows what that looks like. No one here knows what 20,000 square feet. You're used to limiting people to 150 square feet for a shopping plaza, and suddenly you say, "Here's 20,000 square feet. We have no idea how gaudy that's going to be. We have no idea what's going on." And say, "We need a pylon 90 feet high because we're behind STS," is very interesting. We have given no line of sight. Do you know where you're going to be able to see a 90-foot-high pylon in this city?
Mr. Giaccoloni, I need you to summarize, please.
Well, summarize, summarize is there are so many facts that you don't know, and so many issues that are novel here that you need to give it more time. There's no deadline. A month from now is not going to slow down someone who does not have their license yet. Thank you.
Thank you. John Roth.
John Roth, 376 Broadway. I've been a longstanding businessman in this community. I'm in favor of the zone change, the modification to it. I think it's a great project for this community. I think it's a great reinvestment in all of the things that have taken place in the city, so I encourage you to vote yes at the next meeting for the C3 zone change. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Ann Rosillo.
Mayor, council president, and council members. I'm Mary Ann Rosillo from East Front Street, and if you don't know, I am for the casino. I want to set something straight about the 2008 C3 zoning. East Front Street is C3 zoning, and we were changed back in 2008 because we had a plan put together where we were going to build a Mohawk Harbor. I don't know if you remember this, but that was when we got the C3 zoning. The Alco property was not included in it because they were not part of our neighborhood. That's why they were not changed. They were industrial. The comment about the parking, if you stop and think, most of that property was parking in Alco. There were cars all over. There were parking, there were parking lots down on Front Street where Alco cars parked, so I don't see where this is a problem. The comments from the Stockade residents about not having public access, they have Riverside Park. They don't even want people in that park. They fought not to have a boat launch there. They did not want public access there. They didn't want the boat there, I can't think of the name now. So I don't think they have a right to comment on not having public access at the Mohawk The buildings, being too big, they're going to be beautiful. For years, we looked at empty, ugly factory buildings with broken windows, contaminated soil. Now, right now, you drive by there and you, with no buildings there, it's beautiful. I don't see the problem. I don't, I don't see the problem. East Front Street does not see the problem. East Front Street is very excited. We are the neighborhood that butts up against this property. I am totally in support of whatever the Gillesse and David Buco does, because I've gotten to know David Buco. He's an upright citizen. He cares about our neighborhood. He cares about the people of Schenectady, and he's very open for suggestions and anything to make people happy. In closing, I just want to say thank you, mayor, for taking the time out of your busy schedule to sit with East Front Street and try to figure out where we would go next with this development coming through and how to make our neighborhood better. It was much appreciated. And I just want to say, remember, because of the Mohawk Harbor and Rivers Casino, East Front Street is not a declining neighborhood. We are a neighborhood in bloom. Thank you.
Thank you. Doug Sales. Doug Sales.
Hi. I'm Doug Sales, a proud owner of 39 Front Street, home of former Mayor David DeForest of Schenectady. My thought about this project is, is the vision as you drive over Freeman's Bridge Road and you come into the city. Once upon the left, you had the Big End Plaza. Now you have the, the beautiful Gold Corporation headquarters, which by the way, is roughly on the same scale as the buildings we're talking about here. I think that the true hosting nature of the city of Schenectady is that people are going to want to see an integrated plan, which the C3 zoning will allow, so the 2.8 million people that come to the city in the future and have their first impression be the excellent property that Metroplex and the Gillesse Group are putting together will see something that's coordinated and properly zoned. So I'm highly in favor of C3 zoning, and I hope you feel the same way. Thank you.
Thank you. Peter Sterns.
I'm Peter Sterns with Business, I'm Business Manager of Labor's Local 157 right here in Schenectady. Want to thank the council members, Madam President, Mayor McCarthy. I also want to thank our members for coming out tonight. They work hard every day. They work out in the elements. They build the bridges, the roads, the schools, and everything that we get to use every day. The changes, we will have a lot of positive impacts for the changes this is going to bring to Schenectady. It's going to change Schenectady for continued growth and increasing the tax base. Also, 60 of our members live right here in Schenectady, and I'm pretty sure we'll probably have more members after that that'll be in Schenectady where we can also give some very good jobs. Many communities would love to have the opportunity that we have right now. And one thing I can always say, and I've seen it a lot, change is never easy, but without it, we will never move forward. I hope you will adopt the zoning and move Schenectady forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Giuseppe Vaglio.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and everyone else here this evening. I am Dr. Vaglio from Palm Beach of the school. Like to say that I'm here in favor of the C3 zoning. We have all worked hard here in Schenectady to come to where we, where we have come, and it is time to adopt this. Remember, I just want to leave you with this note, nothing changes if nothing changes. So please, adopt the C3 zoning, and thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Philip Morris.
Mayor, Madam President, council members, Philip Morris, who lives on 47 Skirmerhorn Road in Rotterdam, Schenectady postal address. And I also have a home in, that I still own, at 109 Front Street. I've had the opportunity over 13 years to watch us compromise and battle and fight and come up with the right thing to do and consistently do the right thing. When I first moved here, I was told, "Oh, my God, don't go there. It's a disaster," and how wrong that advice was and how glad I am I didn't take it. I've had the chance to watch some of the process here on the harbor project from the inside, being allowed to watch design process, being allowed to participate in some of the conversations staff has had, and I think it's been an act of compromise, compromise that is essential and has been essential from forever for any group of people to get to a new place. The C3 revisions that are being proposed are compromises. I watched them happen myself at the Planning Commission meeting. I left the meeting early a little bit, but proud as hell of the process and the openness to just debate it, figure it out, sit down, not fight, but come up with something that seemed to work. And I think that this revision is more of the same and more of what has made us work for the last 13 years. So I urge your acceptance, and I am going to leave to go join my birthday party.
Thank you. Rich Unger.
Richard Unger, 216 and 1/2 Union Street. I was going to say something, and I'm going to change. First of all, I want to say, I am in support of this project. Some people don't quite get that. The changes in the C3, I have some questions about, but, and my biggest, biggest one frankly is the public access issue. And I also want to say that we've only lived, my wife and I, in the Stockade for, I don't know, seven months, eight months. We moved here in June. We moved here by choice, believe it or not. We both retired after living 23 years in Florida and moved here, to Schenectady. Okay. That was the choice. That was the choice. So, and I, I want to also want to say that if I had been living in the Stockade at the time that they were considering the dock, I probably would not have been on the side of those that were against the dock. Now, that may upset some of my friends now, but it, it is public access, and so we need to consider it for here. Like I said, I am in support of this project. I think it will be a good project. The question I had is, is more of an observation. You heard at the commission meeting week ago, two weeks ago, there are a lot of comments, a lot of complaints, concerns, and all that. A president of ours, a former president of ours, once said, "The only thing we have to fear is fear itself." And I think that was what you see or saw going on in the commission level with the public. We've been told this is a great project. I think it probably will be, but we haven't seen it. So when you throw out 110 feet of building or signage and nobody has seen it, to me, it's, well, let me say, I don't think anybody in this room would put down a non-refundable deposit on a suit or a car or a house before they've at least had a chance to look at it. Look at the style of the suit. Is it a modern style, contemporary style, or is it an old style from the 1890s, you know? The car, what model, make is it? Convertible. The house, how big is it? Does it have a large yard? You do that, and then you make a decision. You put down a non-refundable deposit. This change to the C3, and by the way, it's been stated three times, I think, I've heard, it is already a C3 zoning. It's just the height. So, my observation would be, if you can do this, is continue along the process you're on. You had, you'll take comments tonight. You'll go to your committee meetings next week, I think, and then it'll come back for a vote. In between that time, I would suggest, ask the developer even for sketches so that you have a little bit more information to go on. Sketches of the buildings, how it might look, quick, quick renderings. If they're not done yet, they're not going to make a full submittal, but even if it's preliminary, you can get an idea of what it is and then vote as you see fit. So I do support the project, and thank you very much.
Thank you. And David Buco.
Wow, a lot quicker one, huh? Good evening, Madam President, members of the council, Mayor McCarthy, and supporters and the public. Thanks for your comments. This change in zoning is not about the casino. This is about Mohawk Harbor. This project is happening, was happening before the casino. We would have been proposing these amendments to the planning board and to the council with or without a casino. The casino is already exempt from zoning. So these are things that are necessary for us to proceed with the project. There is a timeframe. We want to get going here. We are going here. If you see the infrastructure, drive by every day. It's really exciting. Anybody that's seen it and seen all that equipment, there's 40-some-odd pieces of machinery out there. It's one of the most complicated projects we've ever worked with. The staff at the city and the planning board was terrific. This was not just depositing some zoning changes and voting on it. There was a lot of give and take, and I really want to commend the city staff. They were thorough. They were engaging. They were critical. They were a pain at times, but guess what? We all worked through it together. And we spent four and a half hours, almost, four, four hours with the Planning Commission, going through everything line by line with some very, very good input from the public and very good input from the planning board. And it was a very, very thorough, thorough review, line by line. We all missed dinner, but we were there till almost 11 o'clock, but it was well worthwhile going through because it showed, as Philip said, it showed the process worked. This project does have public access. We're working with the county and the canal corp with a bike path. It's going right through our property. It's private property. We've got a bike path. We've got a harbor that hopefully will be approved very shortly and be able to have access from the river. Nobody's doing a harbor. The easiest thing to do would have been not to do a harbor. It's like $5 million plus to do it. But we think we need to get back to our roots and access the river. We want people out there. We're going to have stores. We're going to have residents. We're going to have vibrancy. And it's one that, when you looked and when the governor came and when they had the announcement, every other community wanted it in their community, well, maybe not East Green Bush, but the fact is that this community all worked together so well, and we took input from a variety of people. The plans are moving forward. We need this change in zoning so that we know what we can build and what we can't build. So I want to thank everybody who has been involved with it. I want to thank our friends in labor, our, our friends in business, our friends in the community, and our friends in the Stockade, too. We're going to be doing something that we're all going to be proud of, and I thank you for the effort and the time. It's been a, it's been a long journey on this stuff, over a year and change working on this stuff, and it's, it's one that everybody has their say, everybody has their comments, and we want to take them all into consideration. But the end result, it's going to create a significant amount of tax base for our community, which is desperately needed, both, both the school district, the county, and the city. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I have no one else signed up, so I'm going to declare this public hearing closed. We will, Mary, you did not say?
I would like to say something, please.
You, you did not indicate public hearing. Come on up.
My name is Mary McLean. I live in the city. I would like to speak to Agenda Item Number 11, 12, and 1. Item 11 is...
Mary, this is just about the public hearing. This is just the, this is just the public hearing on changes to the C3 mixed-use waterfront.
Oh, it's the second section?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Okay. All right. So I will declare the public hearing closed. I know many of you probably want to leave at this point, so I'm just going to pause the meeting so you can exit, and then we'll reconvene the meeting shortly.
Is it commercial break?
Yes.
We're good.
My name is, what? David.
My name is, what? David.
Yeah, he asked them to come out.
What is this? What is this party?
We have to have a fair treatment. It's too nice. They're, they're... Interesting. All right. Hydrofluosilium.
All right. We'll move on with the meeting with the approval of the minutes from January 12, 2015. All right. Communications and petitions.
Communications presented to the City Council for Monday, January 26, 2015. Under official from the mayor, a list of appointments dated January 26, 2015. From Christopher Wallin, city engineer, recommending the award of the golf course tree removal contract to be awarded to D&amp;L Tree Service. From Raymond Senegal, fire chief, recommending the award for the Rescue One utility body to Wildfire Equipment Company, Inc. From Paulifon, director of water and wastewater, recommending the award of the four contracts for WPCP laboratory upgrade project to be awarded to the lowest responsible bidders. From Paulifon, director of water and wastewater, recommending the award of the chlorine gas 2015 contract be awarded to JCI Jones Chemical, Inc. From Paulifon, director of water and wastewater, recommending the award of the hydrofluosilium acid 2015 contract be awarded to Thatcher Company of New York, Inc. From Paulifon, director of water and wastewater, recommending the award of the sodium hydrochloride 2015 contract be awarded to Surpass Chemical Company. Under general, there are none. Under petitions, there are none.
Thank you. Any committee reports? Okay. Ms. Perazzo.
I just want to say that we passed out of committee the changes or the adjustments to 2014 budget so that we can satisfy the contract that we've agreed upon with our unions, and I'm just very happy that that has occurred. I'm happy that we came to an agreement, some of the hardest-working people in the city, although everybody works very hard, but just want to recognize that that's moving forward and everybody is getting caught up. So, thank you.
Good. Thank you. Any other committee reports? If not, we'll move to privilege of the floor related to the legislative agenda. Mary McLean is the only person I have signed up to speak to that.
Item number 11 is for the purchase of chlorine gas. The material is a state-mandated chemical for the treatment of city water. Council has no choice but to spend the money. The cost is only $18,980. As for item number 12, the purchase of fluoride, the chemical is not mandated. According to my research, fluoride is a byproduct of hazardous waste, but every year, council inserts, insists on spending the money for it even though all other cities, towns, and amlets in the capital district do not use it. The cost for the material this year is $40,272. I consider the purchase of fluoride an unnecessary expenditure, and the item should be removed from the city budget. As for item number 1, this is what I would have preferred that the mayor talk about in his State of the City message, such as how many union contracts were negotiated last year and how much pork went into them. Tax expenditure is the thing that affects the homeowner in Schenectady, not development. There is a big difference between the word "development" and the word "income." Without more income, the homeowner's taxes increase. Developers don't pay taxes for 10 years. So how does development pay for the pork? The council votes to put in the union contracts, contracts, such as tonight's item number 1. I want the unions out of my pocket. If the unions always want more for themselves, then it should be easy for them to understand that I want to keep what I have. what I'm talking about? I understand what I'm talking about. How could you, Mayor, as a respected person of authority, in the paper and the bad apples in the police force, say crime is down? Crime is not down because the majority of the crime that gets truly reported doesn't. Why? Can you explain that to me? I don't think you can. And the thing is, Mr. Mayor, as I already apologized to you, and as a person of respect and authority, how dare you, in the State of the City --
Please address your comments to me.
-- State of the City address, say the fact that crime is down, show fancy, fancy numbers. How can you? Can you explain that to me? I don't think you can.
Thank you. Marba Isaacs.
Madam President, Mr. Mayor, City Council. We have a world-renowned artist who died in Schenectady on January 21st. His name is Giles Gilson. I met Mr. Gilson about a year ago because Hampton Hill Neighborhood Association sent him a letter to clean up his property. And he called me and he said that he couldn't do it, he was sick. And myself, Vicky Horvitz, and City Councilwoman Marion Porterfield went to his property, and we cleaned that property up. We did a very good job for him, and I would like to give my condolence to his son, his only son. And I think that Schenectady was a very good person there. Thank you.
Thank you. Jason Plank.
Madam President, City Councilman Mayor, we've been asking now for the last four weeks, what's going on with community development block grants? You know, we have the grants that are supposed to be ready for the community, and they've got to be due by May 15th. We've also got the consolidated plan for five-year plan. That's also got to have public hearings and everything else. What's going on? I mean, all this has to be done by May 15th. If it's not done, we lose the $3 million. And nearly of that $3 million, almost 2.4 of it, is paying for staff salaries. So, and when you figure $300,000, almost $340,000 equals 1% property tax, you're looking at almost 8% property tax right there, just to help pay for those salaries if we don't get this thing moving. You know, that's going to be a big hit. And also, too, is just what's going to happen with all the money? Some of that $300,000 is going to the police force for enhancements in the low-income neighborhoods. So, I mean, this is a very important piece. And if you don't have the five-year plan put together, just because you have the community development block grant put together, the five years got to go with it. So, you know, just because you all of a sudden now get the one-year plan put together, if you don't have the five-year, you lose the one-year plan. So, I mean, this is something that's got to be done, and, you know, you've got to put it out to an RFP request proposal, and then you've got almost 30 days to put it out, and then you've got staff reviews to go through it. You know, this is already almost the first of February. You've got less than three months. And then you've got to have a public hearing here at the City Council, and then the City Council's got to review it. We're running out of time. Also, too, is that in about 33 days, March 1st, is your taxes for the property taxes are for start and exempts and so forth, they're going to be due. I urge everyone, as I did last year, file a grievance. The City Council has anywhere between 25% to 50% of reduced, the commercial developers and the developers and contractors, to reduce their property taxes over the last three, four years. And there is an inequity between the homeowners and the businesses. This also doesn't include all the pilot programs that have kicked in. So, I mean, you know, we've got to be able to have a reassessment, it's got to get done. It's way out of the whack. And again, please grieve your taxes, and it's due on March 1st.
Thank you. Joy Hall.
I'm Joy Hall of Schenectady. I say we've got three issues right here, right now. Number one, think we've got to change some safety rules. We've got the casino coming in. Down Area Boulevard is one of the worst places where speeders are going like crazy and turning on when the arrow's not on. And we need to keep Schenectady clean, we need to put up more trash cans, Albany Street, everywhere. So that's the only way we're going to get things done, is going to have to change some things around here.
Thank you. Mary McLean.
These comments were prepared for the last meeting. I had wanted to say something about Liberty Park. The people in this city have been very good to me, including the policemen, firemen, city staff, and so forth. Even Mr. Kozier has always gone out of his way for me, and to all I am very grateful. The woman who wrote the letter to the editor in praise of the city workers learned what I knew 35 years ago. There are good people in Schenectady. The councilwoman also thought the letter was noteworthy of the city workers. She said, "We do more with less." I want to bump the thought up a notch. We have just been through the holidays. How many people thought to put a few dollars in an envelope and give it to those who clean this building? This is a large public building, and it looks spick and span year-round. Does anyone ever say thanks to them? Regarding beautification, the mayor said some people only see the negative. When negative exists in your neighborhood every day, it's hard to avoid. I reported the negative of my neighborhood four and a half years ago. It's still there. Does anybody care? Furthermore, the city may have paid for eight and a half miles of blacktop, but not every inch of the street was covered, and I can prove it. It's not pretty. Another item, this is a copy of the comprehensive plan. How many of you have read it? I have. It's also council's job to review it periodically. Have you done it? It costs $95,000 to prepare it. Council approved it, and it's council's responsibility to enforce it. For Bellevue, the action plan reads, "A beautiful, clean, and green community." Woodlawn, action plan, "A beautiful, clean, and green community." Hamilton Hill Vale, action plan, "Beautiful, clean, and green community." You get the picture. It hasn't happened. A lot of money was spent to renovate Steamed Sparks. Six weeks after the ribbon cutting and the hoopla had died down, I visited the park. It was not being maintained. Now the city has received over $400,000 to renovate Liberty Park. Please withhold money for maintenance. In September, I stood down there to catch a bus, a CDTA bus. That plot of ground had more cigarette butts than there were blades of grass.
Please summarize.
Not to mention, okay, two more sentences. Not to mention the mouse that was foraging for food. Who should clean that area? Until all the litter is removed from city property, this taxpayer will remind council the city is doted dirty, and you can bet on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Jean Carney.
Good evening, Madam President, Mr. Mayor, council members. I'm here tonight in my role as president of the Board of Directors at Schenectady Civic Players. We are the oldest, or one of the oldest, continuously-running community theaters in the country, and we've been in our current home at 12 South Church Street since 1928. During that time, we have mounted over 400 productions. We bring thousands of patrons to downtown Schenectady to see our shows every season. And as many of you may know, a little over a year ago, we embarked on a rather ambitious campaign to install an elevator with a lobby that connects the two buildings, the theater and the annex. And tonight, I am really proud to announce that we are ready to move on to the next step, weather permitting. So this Thursday at 12:30, we are having a groundbreaking ceremony, and I would like to invite you all to come, where you can see our plans, see how it will enhance the theater, enable our patrons to get to the theater more easily, be completely handicap-accessible. And I just want to thank you, and I hope to see you all there at 12:30, the 29th, 12 South Church Street. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathleen Coller.
Good evening. My name is Kathleen Coller. I'm from Glenville. I have a volunteer program called Dogs in Need Everywhere, or DINE, as it's known in the local animal community. As an extension of that work, my husband and I have a program called Christmas is Going to the Dogs. And what we do is we find some of the neediest shelters in New York State, we do a fundraising campaign, and we purchase necessities and get donations, and we spend Christmas Day delivering those items to dogs in shelters. This past Christmas, I reached out to the Schenectady City Shelter for this effort. They did not choose to partner with us, but we were able to donate about $3,100 of items to two shelters in Oswego County. We had a little money left over, and we are purchasing items for four additional shelters, one of which is Schenectady. I've been trying to deliver these items since shortly after Christmas. I have explained to the PD that our mission is to deliver directly to dogs. I've also explained that I have to be accountable to our supporters who trust us to do this. Unfortunately, I think a message came through the ranks down to me that I am not permitted on the grounds of the city shelter. And this, they said that I have to deliver them to the police department, which doesn't make a lot of sense to me. And it also puts me in kind of an awkward position because I'm forced to go against my own mission. Councilman Riggi has tried to help me resolve the issue. Unfortunately, we were not able to do that, so I am making a compromise tonight, and I am bringing two bins of toys here, and he is going to take them directly to the shelter dogs. Although I am not happy with the policy, and I really do think this creates an atmosphere, or can create an atmosphere of distrust in the community, I do want to make it clear that I know there are police officers, probably many of them, I'm sure, who care about the stray dogs of Schenectady and do care about the animals at the shelter. With that, I am donating the following. And I'm going to get them, donate them to Mr. Riggi. There are 15 Kong toys, one large jar of peanut butter, seven dogwood sticks, 12 bully sticks, a bag of jerky. The retail value is $280. If anything cannot, is not used by Schenectady City Shelter, I ask that they be returned to me. Thank you, Mr. Riggi. Thank you very much, everybody, on behalf of myself, my husband, our supporters, and Dogs in Need Everywhere. Thank you very much.
And thank you. That's very nice. All right, I don't believe I have anybody else signed up to speak at this, so I'm going to declare this portion of the meeting closed, and we'll move to miscellaneous business of the council. Don't all speak at once. Okay, Mr. Kozier.
We all know Super Bowl Sunday is coming up next week, but beforehand, if you may, to support Jack Valvo's foundation, they're having a breakfast, a breakfast buffet fundraiser from, again, Sunday, February 1st at the Gyllenhaal Elks, which is at 3867 Carmen Road in Gyllenhaal, just a couple of minutes down from St. Madeline Sophie's Church. And it's an all-you-can-eat buffet from 8:00 a.m. until 12:00 noon. It's children under eight years of age is $4, adults are $8. And again, Jack's Place is hoping to open up, I heard, in the early spring of this year. And again, just a great cause and certainly a great way to start off our Super Bowl Sunday. So again, support the Valvo Foundation. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Riggi.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to thank Kathleen and DINE for the donation, and I'll be sure that they get to the dogs down at the shelter. Hopefully, things will loosen up after a while, and we can partner with rescue groups and people that want to help the animals that are taken in. I just want to remind everyone, I don't know if we're going to get snow, if we're going to get two inches, or if we're going to get 10 inches or 14 inches, just let the street crews do their thing in the city and give them room to work, and I'm sure they'll clean up things in a timely manner. It's something that happens. It's not the end of the world. I know it gets hyped so much and so much, but we'll all get through it, and I just hope that everybody drives safely and is safe in this weather. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Porterfield.
Actually, I just wanted to say thank you to Ms. Coller for the donation and for being persistent to get to the, get to things for the animals that they needed. And so to know that, I'm sure it's appreciated by the shelter and certainly by the residents of Schenectady, and I appreciate her persistence in getting that done. And maybe we can, in the future, work through that so that we can have her go directly to the shelter. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? No? Okay, Mr. Mayor.
Although I am not happy with the policy, and I really do think this creates an atmosphere or can create an atmosphere of distrust in the community, I do want to make it clear that I know there are police officers, probably many of them, I'm sure, who care about the stray dogs of Schenectady and do care about the animals at the shelter. With that, I am donating the following, and I'm going to get them, donate them to Mr. Riggi. There are 15 Kong toys, one large jar of peanut butter, seven dogwood sticks, 12 bully sticks, a bag of jerky. The retail value is $280. If anything cannot, is not used by Schenectady City Shelter, I ask that they be returned to me. Thank you, Mr. Riggi. Thank you very much, everybody, on behalf of myself, my husband, our supporters, and Dogs in Need Everywhere. Thank you very much.
And thank you. That's very nice. All right, I don't believe I have anybody else signed up to speak at this, so I'm going to declare this portion of the meeting closed, and we'll move to miscellaneous business of the council. Don't all speak at once. Okay, Mr. Kozier?
We all know Super Bowl Sunday is coming up next week, but beforehand, if you may, to support Jack Felvel's foundation, they're having a breakfast, a breakfast buffet fundraiser from, again, Sunday, February 1st at the Gyllenhaal Elks, which is at 3867 Carmen Road in Gyllenhaal, just a couple of minutes down from St. Madeline Sophie's Church. And it's an all-you-can-eat buffet from 8:00 AM until 12:00 noon. It's children under eight years of age is $4, adults are $8. And again, Jack's place is hoping to open up, I heard, in the early spring of this year. And again, just a great cause and certainly a great way to start off our Super Bowl Sunday. So again, support the Felval Foundation. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Riggi.
I want to thank Kathleen and DINE for the donation, and I'll be sure that they get to the dogs down at the shelter. Hopefully, things will loosen up after a while, and we can partner with rescue groups and people that want to help the animals that are taken in. I just want to remind everyone, I don't know if we're going to get snow, if we're going to get two inches, or if we're going to get 10 inches or 14 inches, just let the street crews do their thing in the city and give them room to work, and I'm sure they'll clean up things in a timely manner. It's something that happens. It's not the end of the world. I know it gets hyped so much and so much, but we'll all get through it, and I just hope that everybody drives safely and is safe in this weather. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Porterfield.
Actually, I just wanted to say thank you to Ms. Coller for the donation and for being persistent to get to the, get to things for the animals that they needed. And so to know that it's, I'm sure it's appreciated by the shelter and certainly by the residents of Schenectady, and I appreciate her persistence in getting that done. And maybe we can, in the future, work through that so that we can have her go directly to the shelter. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? No? Okay, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam President. Again, I'm not quite sure what happened with the donation. We set that up, and again, people forget that the animal-holding facility that we have sometimes has animals in it and sometimes does not. And it was, I thought, set up to have it, take it at the police station, which runs the facility. We would have acknowledged that, done some appropriate recognition for your donation. So I'm sorry for whatever miscommunication there was or lack of that coordination. This week, Moody's took and affirmed our A3 rating and removed the negative outlook on our credit rating. So again, it's effectively an upgrade. I thank Commissioner DeGenova, the staff, the council, for their continued work as we improve the finances of the city. Again, with, I think we'll get a little bit of snow tonight. Crews are ready. I don't think we're going to feel the brunt of the storm. Some of our communities to the east and south of here, we're going to get hit a lot worse, but mind people, no unnecessary driving, one shovel on each side of a fire hydrant. And again, work with the city crews. We'll be out and we'll get the streets cleaned curb to curb if individuals comply with the parking regulations. Thank you, Madam President.
And I just want to congratulate Union College Hockey on winning the trophy. It will be nice to have it back in the case downstairs.
It'll be back short.
Good, good. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Kozier, seconded by Ms. Porterfield, all in favor? Aye. We are adjourned.